It's 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today, and I'd like to read a statement. This happened earlier today, and this came out as a press release. With sincere regret, the City of Independence confirms the death of a temporary city worker in a one-vehicle truck accident east of Independence today. Independence interim city manager Kelly Passuer said the truck was traveling east on US 160 Highway en route to the county landfill when it left the roadway shortly after noon today. Two workers, both temporary employees in the city sanitation department, were traveling in the vehicle. The second employee also was injured in the accident and was transported to a medical facility for care. His condition is unknown at this time. And the statement reads, "There are not enough words for us to fully express our sympathy to the family of the man who was lost today. We offer our deepest condolences upon his passing and prayers for strength and a full recovery for our injured team member." So for all those in the audience today, please remember the family of the gentleman that's lost, the person that's lost today, and the one that's receiving medical care, that he recovers from his injuries, and I pray that God gives him strength and comfort in their time of need. So if we could just pause for just a few seconds, and, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on it?
No, I don't have any questions.
Again, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask that we also, for the next week, we have the walk-through at the water plant, and we would like to resume that meeting after that here to go over the phase two of that project, because the engineer would be here if you're agreeable to that. So I wanted to ask if we could add that to the agenda, and then I'll have an item one or two about some airport grants.
Okay, okay. Also, well, let me go ahead and mention this too, for some of you that don't know. The county lost an employee today also, Scott Barnhart, who was over zoning and environmental for the county. He's also passed away today, so please remember him and the family in your prayers and in your thoughts, so. Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The consent agenda, do you have any questions, either one of you, about the agenda? Anything that you would like to talk about? I'm okay. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item three, items for commission action. Item A, consider an ordinance modifying the electrical board.
Mayor, the chairman of the electrical board, I believe, is here to represent this item.
Kenny, would you like to come up and speak, please? I know who you are, but if you'd identify yourself, I've worked with you for a lot of years.
I'm Kenny Evans.
All right.
General President Chairman of the Electrical Board. I don't know really what you have to approve tonight, other than a new board member. I don't know what else.
What's the ordinance for the makeup of the board? The board had the telephone exchange for Independence and the old ordinance and with cell phones and all these different things, and I think some of the board members now don't live in that area. The plumbing board says they need to be licensed by the city, and so we wanted to change the wording to be equal to that. And then the other change was, had to do with, it said that the governing body appointed their chairman every year, but all the years I've been here, I've never seen that occur.
Okay.
And so this allows them to reorganize. I think that's what they've been doing anyway, but it just makes it official that that's what it is.
In the past, we, as a board, we have always voted for our chairman of that board.
Okay.
But that's not what the current city regulations read.
Right.
So we're just trying to clean that part up and then correct the other to be consistent with the plumbing board.
Okay.
So that's what it is. And then once that's done, and then we'll bring the appointments back to you at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, all right, Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, we had a chance to read this. Any questions?
No questions.
We're just cleaning up language.
I have none.
All right. Then I make a motion that we move to adopt an ordinance amending City Code Section 18-71 and 18-72, having to do with the makeup of the electrical board. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item B on the commission action list, consider a request to partner with the VFW for ADA improvements to the sidewalk and to provide van and car ADA parking stalls at 113 East Myrtle Street. David?
Mayor, how are you this evening? VFW came to the city. I have Bill here, and he'll be up here, and Sean's here too, our great VFW. We have some issues there. They have installed a new elevator, and they're needing ADA accessibility to that door. We also have some issues in the parking lot. Parking out front isn't ADA correct, it isn't correct, so we proposed moving some ADA stalls into the parking lot to the east. We've also had some injuries the last couple of days. Those trees are gumball trees and some other type of seed. Commissioner Koflic was looking at this with me. We would also put to the commission to discuss removing the trees, cleaning up the parking lot, putting in the stalls, adding some additional lighting to correct that. But I'm gonna kind of step back, and I'll let Bill come up here and visit with you guys, because I basically told him, Sean and I just kind of put a concept out there and let you guys work this out. In the past, the city has done 75-25 splits downtown on these type of things, but I think Bill's got an idea about a ramp potentially that would work. Sean Turner is also here, because we're talking about potentially doing this work with a change order, which would save us money in engineering, keep it at the current costs that we're paying for the concrete to save the city money. So with that, Bill, I'll let you come up and appreciate everything you guys do.
All right, thank you, Bill. How are you today?
Pretty good.
Would you identify yourself for people that don't know who you are?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and staff, thanks for having me. I'm Bill Woolen Snyder. I'm the bingo committee chairman for the Independence VFW Post. We do Monday night bingo, and that's a major source of revenue for the Post. Let's just do different programs that we have. The bingo hall is on the second floor. Several of our players need some assistance to get upstairs. We have an elevator, and it's not a new one, it's been there for several years. We just had to do some expensive repairs, and I think I said that we could've got a new one for what we, so it's, it's been there a while. The entrance to that elevator has steps, two steps to get up to it. If we have wheelchairs or walkers, then they have to come through the club entrance or the club room and kind of work their way through. We'd like a ramp to replace the steps. It's, city sidewalk is the one step, the other one is kind of in our building. And then I figured since it was a city step, I'd ask the city about doing it, and things got a little complicated after that part. We talked with the city staff, and they talked about the 75-25 cost, but then when we got the proposal and they'd added a cut at the alley at the Community National Bank, and then talked about moving the handicapped spot back to the little city parking lot with the gazebo in there. We don't like the handicapped parking lot back there in the city parking lot. We think it's too far. Right now, there are concerns, like you said, about the gumballs and the acorns and some tiny little balls, we think maybe seeds off a vine or something, but they were incredibly slick when we went out there and viewed it. So with that, the city staff talked about removing those trees. Well, that's adding to the costs and adding to the work and is way more than we intended. And, you know, their story about the gumball tree, that one of the kids from the FFA gathered up some of those, and when they went to the convention in the big city, he made $42 selling gumballs as porcupine eggs, so we, sorry.
That's okay.
A true entrepreneur.
Okay, with the cut at the bank, and we don't think those should be part of the VFW's share to pay for. All we want is the ramp, and we think in discussions that some repair work is in the plan, the strategic plan maybe, to be done, but we'd like the ramp. We also wondered if we could do a metal ramp, if that would meet city codes, if we could find or have a metal ramp done, maybe either through donations or some kind of financing.
Okay, you had talked about maybe a potential solution, something that we could work out between the city and the VFW? Because primarily you're just interested in trying to get people into the building.
Right, right.
And so they can get up into the elevator and then hit the bingo hall on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, with the ADA access into the building, we've talked before, is the responsibility of the building owner. The unique feature with the VFW is the main entrance, the sidewalk, is accessible. It's basically on-grade, there's no step. The west door is at the same elevation as a floor elevation inside the main entrance door. So what would be called a ramp is really a level walkway from the main entrance over to the west entrance. And what, I went up and looked at it with Bill and was talking with Ryan York, the thought of, instead of tearing out and going with a concrete ramp, you could build a structure on top of the sidewalk, and that's where the steel structure came to frame a level walkway. Wouldn't need rails, but it would need, you know, a guard so somebody wouldn't fall off the edge because of the elevation difference. And that is, with their requirement to be accessible, that would be totally their cost to share, and the idea, it would be much simpler than a concrete structure or masonry structure. It would be easy to fabricate and install, and more likely that they could get donations or even their, some of the members or welders, that they could fabricate that. Then with the parking lot, ADA parking would be required there because it's ours, so the accessible spaces in the parking lot would be city responsibility with our ADA work. The curb ramp at the alley crossing with the landing entrance into the west door needs some adjustment, and I don't think those curb ramps at the alley comply with slope and tactile warning, so that would be our responsibility too. The parking on the street, the ADA doesn't really require that parking, but the slope of the street makes it not practical to get a total compliance stall there. But when we were looking and talking to David, I thought you could make that not an ADA accessible stall, but an accommodatable stall, that if somebody's elderly, they're not in a wheelchair, they can still navigate the curb, that that could still be for them, but the wheelchair actual van and car parking would be in the parking lot. And I don't know, those seeds are a little bit bigger than a BB, but they're so many and so dense that it is a hazard to walk on them, and trying to eliminate those, the acorns are a hazard, and the sweet gum balls are a hazard, that, you know, really, there's three trees that should be removed, two could be replaced, one adjacent to the building blocks the flag, so, you know, that could just go to a lawn area or whatever, but it seems like we had come up with an alternate that could preserve their funds, and then we could still accomplish addressing the issues through our one cent sales tax for ADA and stay pure on our focus. We're addressing city responsibility, and the building owner addressing their responsibility. I think the only thing we'd probably need with the ramp would be a use of right-of-way, I forget the correct term for that agreement.
Temporary use of right-of-way?
Right.
Agreement?
Because their ramp would be built on the right-of-way of the cities, so, you know, it could, it could go that way, and we could get everything met with our ADA funds and then them using, it would be much less than what's projected for their cost on doing a permanent ramp. And then the advantage of this type of ramp, if at a later date, the building's renovated and the entrances are changed, and there's one common entrance with a vestibule that would, or a lobby area that would connect the two to the hallway that has the elevator, then this structure could be removed and the full width of the sidewalk would be restored, and our handicap ramps that we put in at the curb crossing would still be in compliance too.
Well, I know you have limited funds, and this sounds like maybe a good fit, what you've indicated and what you would be responsible for.
Yes, sir.
And I know your members are very creative, to put it, I could put it in another word, but let's just leave it at that. And I'm sure they could, I'm sure they could come up with something that would be workable, that would meet the needs of the VFW members that are coming in to the hall and wanting to play bingoing, and that would also help keep the costs down, especially if the members would fabricate it and actually put it into place, so that would be a win for you.
Yes, sir.
And for us, we would look at what the city would need to do as far as ADA concerning that facility, and of course, that cost would be borne by the city. We collect sales tax money to make improvements like that, so that sounds like something that's very workable to me. Have you roughly identified a cost?
Not yet. We had a couple of feelers out, but I haven't heard back from, from any of them yet.
Okay.
And David, with an arrangement like this, do you see any problems for the city to work with them on?
No, Sean, you don't, with, Sean and I briefly discussed it before the meeting, and...
No, I don't. I understand the scope, we'll fix the parking lot.
Or remove the trees.
Yeah, make those spots compliant, and we'll leave the existing one alone and place the ramp in the alley, and then the rest would be on the VFW.
Yeah, I think that our one kind of has to slide over a little bit, probably, but...
Probably would, yeah.
We'll fix that and the one across, make them both compliant, so.
Then we just have to change the signage on the one at the street.
Right, yep, and we'll get that done.
So the term accommodatable, I don't remember hearing that term before.
That's because I just made it up.
Yeah, I don't think we could mark it as an ADA stall, but there's some other sign that could probably place there for...
Okay, I should've known.
Yeah.
Creative license.
Get that sign or something.
There you go.
So what I understood you to say is we can't really do an ADA parking space in the street because of the slope, it doesn't allow.
Right. For a true ADA parking space to be designated, it has to be in 100% compliance.
Right.
And with the cross slope and that, the running slope, it can't work with the crown there.
Yeah.
So, and visiting with the DOJ, they're, on-street parking is not, they'll let you put it in, but if you do, it's got to comply, but it's not mandated that we put the spaces there. So, you know, this where it is, if we could come up with another term than accessible parking space.
Right, right.
It could still be beneficial for other disabilities.
Right.
And yet, then, the actual compliant required spaces would be there in the lot.
In the city parking lot.
There are none now.
Right. So as you said, it is a little further to go than you would prefer, but we may not have another alternative, it sounds like.
With the, well, we talked about the place right in front, we'd be pretty happy with that, and then the...
The accommodatable?
Yes.
Okay. And then you would be responsible for the ramp?
Yes, yes.
And what about replacing those trees? I love those trees. What would our tree board say about cutting down those trees and not replacing them?
Well, basically, we've been there every week, maybe twice a week, with birds and the gumballs, and so it's almost impossible to keep it up. We'd have to go there every day and clean up.
I'm sure.
That's how bad it is, and so I would say the tree board would feel okay with that. We'd like to maybe replace maybe all the water or something, but I can see the big trees go, but they are a nuisance.
Sounds like it. I know that, I've walked over there, they're very slippery.
We had one lady fall Monday night on the little, small ones, and then we have had, I know, one lady fall on the acorns. But a lot of our players are elderly, and I'm sure of it.
Which means over 62.
Between my staff and Barb and I, I think we've been there two or three times a week, and there's still issues, so.
Okay, thanks, Barb, all right.
I did want to thank the city staff again, Kelly and Lucy and David, they really, you know, helped me through this. And wanted to mention that the bingo is open to the general public.
Sure.
Come on down.
And we have medical equipment alone too, since we were talking, and we'll loan that to anybody, so.
Okay.
Appreciate you listening to me, and thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
All right, Bill, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll have this...
Do you want us to bring back a temporary use agreement for the next meeting? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
And then will there be a revised, a revised cost too at the...
Yeah, Sean and I just, I just looked at Sean, and he said, "I'll have a revised cost for the next meeting." So we'll bring that both to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So then...
So no action?
No action taken on this, all right. Other than what we've already indicated, what we'll need, revised cost, all right. Moving right along, item C, consider approving a design agreement for reconstruction of the south apron run-up area at the Independence Municipal Airport.
This is a grant, and the city pays 5% of the engineering design costs, so the city share, I believe, was $1,500 out of the $30,000.
We need more grants like that.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
These type, airport grants are very generous.
That's amazing. And how did we choose this firm?
This lot owner's a firm we've been working with for several years. Matt Jacobs, he knows the airport very well.
Okay.
He does a really good job on helping us find grants to apply for, reminding us, hey, in fact, the item I want you to modify on the agenda was to add some additional airport grants that we need to reapply for on the agenda for next week, so we can get those in before the end of the month. So he does a good job for us.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Then I move to authorize a design agreement for reconstruction of the south apron run-up area at the Independence Municipal Airport. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item D, consider a resolution adopting an administrative policy to define credit card procedures for city departments and employees.
I'm Lacy.
Oh, okay, all right.
Wow.
She couldn't be here today.
Totally fooled me.
The city had passed a resolution in 2012, adding a credit card policy, and so Lacy just felt like this needed to be updated to adhere to our procurement policy as well, just kind of work in concert with it.
I'd looked through it and then told Kelly I had a question, and then I found my answer and called back and told her I had an answer, and then I thought, oh, I want to look at it again, and now I got another question.
Okay.
It's all right.
It's simple. I was looking and comparing the procurement policy with the credit card policy, and Section 1, 2.1, has the authority purchasing table on our procurement policy, it's 3.1, but they're, the values are the same, but some of the procedures were different, and I thought maybe with the values and everything being consistent from one to another and the same for, for the schedule, if they were all similar, identical, then there's no confusion. When you change one different from the other, then it can lead to confusion, misunderstanding, and maybe some problems. So that was a question that I had.
And I haven't compared the procurement policy with this policy to see if they were, the amounts were the same. I just, I assume they were the same. I don't know if there's any... any-
Yeah, it's mainly in the, in the table.
I will say that the fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollar amounts probably will not come into effect because our, our credit limit's really not that much.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was just thinking if we, if we had them staggered the same way and the same order going through the approval, and everything was identical, then it would lessen the chance of a, of a accidental misuse of one policy or the other.
Okay.
What is it, what is the credit limit? Does it depend on, we'll go ahead.
It's, it's different for each department. Each department has its own credit limit, but I don't think that the full amount is over twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, for, each department has their own credit limit, so you can't take like one card and split up the cost between each ones. I don't, I don't think it works that way. But I can check with Lacy on that.
Okay. So-
Like, the chief can't go and buy a vehicle for one of his, for his fleet with a credit card.
Right, right. So, so that amount would though vary by department? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. It's based on their spending limits, based on the credit card usage in the past.
Okay. And I was looking at the, the old resolution twenty twelve dash eighteen. And I'm just comparing what, what was signed in twenty twelve and what we're looking at here now. At that time, on item two, it was written out that only those who are authorized by the city manager to use a credit card and have signed the credit card user agreement may use a credit card. Credit cards shall only be used for online purchases or travel that can't be obtained by normal means for the official business of the city. That's how, that's how that read on that resolution. And then it gave some examples of what it could not be used for. And that's what was included in the documents that you've posted for us to review. So, that part hadn't changed. But primarily, it follows along the same lines with the addition of that number two item which I had, which I had just read off concerning that. And then my other question, because I didn't look at their procurement dollar amounts either, so I was curious as how this lined it without policy as far as these dollar amounts. That was something I was going to do this afternoon. And with other things that have come up, I've failed to do that. So, that's, that's my fault.
Like I said, I didn't, I didn't think that she had changed it anything. I thought she just copied and pasted it onto this as well from the procurement policy.
Okay. Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any other questions?
I don't have a specific question about this. It looks fine to me. But we, we have to replace our credit card three times a year because somebody keeps getting our number and using it to buy stuff online. And, I mean, it's, and we don't even shop online. We only spend money in Independence. But like, a month ago, somebody gets on the Dallas Maverick website, spends two thousand dollars on our credit card for Maverick tickets. So, do we have proper precautions that all these, every purchase is reviewed to make sure?
Yes. Lacy has total control over, you know, she can go in there, she can look and approve any transaction that had happened on it. She's got, I think when she explained when we got these cards first approved, she explained how she had really fine eye control on what transactions are-
So, somebody, some sitting place to go in and approve every purchase before it's-
Yeah.
And they're also responsible if, if they try to make a purchase on something that's not allowable?
Correct.
They're, they're signing a document saying that they're going to abide by the regulations that are stated out in this policy.
On the last page of this document, there is an agreement, a credit card user agreement that each employee has to sign whoever uses a card.
Right. And if I remember right, didn't she also not say that she has the ability to go in and, and look at these accounts daily?
Yes.
Or as often as, as often as she wants to, you know, she wants to look at them several times a day?
Right.
So, it gives her the ability to, to monitor these statements, the credit card purchases on a continuing basis. So, if there was something that would show up that would be an anomaly, she would be able to pinpoint that instead of waiting for a, for like me, a statement that would come out to me. And it's, I see something under that I don't recognize from the last month.
Right.
So, that's another way she can keep track of, of how the, how the credit cards are being used. And then they remain in the, in the hand of the department head.
Of the department head, yes.
Right. So, so this is not a card that's handed out to, to everyone.
Right.
It's specifically limited to the department head.
Right. So, if Terry had, one of his employees says, "We need to park down at the water plant." And he makes him sure that they have signed this user agreement, and then he can use the card to, with Terry's approval.
Right. Okay.
With the example that you gave, Gary, the purchase has been made by somebody else, and you got a call from the credit card company?
Well, no, I just saw it on the bill, actually.
So, then you had to go back and-
Contest it.
How does that work with these credit cards? Can somebody make the purchase and it goes through? Or will the card company refund the money back to the city? Or are we stuck with the bill?
They, they will, no, they will actually delete that charge off your card.
Okay.
Once Lacy goes in and calls them and says, "Hey, this was not approved." Somebody has our credit card number. If it's, somebody wants to go buy Maverick tickets.
Okay, sometime business and personal, personal, they're more eager to remove that than on, than on a business card. But it, the, the company we have our cards with, they will remove those charges.
Yeah, like, I think Lacy explained before, she's got real time-
Okay.
-of seeing those charges and being able to dispute those.
All right. Any other?
No. Like I said, I just thought we should have the purchasing rates and the schedule the same from one to another.
So, you want to wait to see, so we can have that, to make sure they're comparable? Just to verify that?
Yeah.
And then, and then we can move on at that point?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we do that? So, that's what we'll do. We'll make sure that they match up with what's already been presented on the procurement policy.
Okay.
And we'll go from that. So, there will be no action on that particular item at that time. So, let's move on to E. Consider twenty nineteen mill and overlay ADA work. David?
Mayor?
Yes.
Worked with Sean Turner, and Sean could come up and if you guys have questions to address the mill and overlay and ADA work and some of our issues, spot fixes and complaints that we're dealing with. Again, we're utilized trying to use the best use of our money and took a little money away from Sean because we're not doing the engineering, but utilizing our current gram contract with the current prices of concrete and allowing, how do you call it, just do these ramps. They're not engineered. Come on up, Sean. But we're putting them in to spec, utilizing our inspectors and-
While we did, we had our inspectors visit each location and do a field sketch enough to determine quantities needed. And then that's boiled down into the spreadsheets you have that would result in a, a change order to gram. So, there's no design per se. It's just all on the construction, engineering, and inspections.
Part.
And, and when we bid the project last time, as you recall, we only had one bidder. It was pretty good prices. So, we think it's probably the best way to go is to negotiate this change order with gram. And those were the quantities our inspectors came up with, which we believe are accurate. And we use the unit prices for gram to calculate those change orders, so.
And these were the, the modifications that we made when we drove around.
Right, yes, yes.
Sean's, Sean looked at them too.
Right.
Yes.
There was the one, the one corner, Laurel and Ninth, the southeast corner, remember it had an inlet that was-
Right. The Laurel and Ninth, where it was just the inlet on the south, it's going to be the southeast corner. Yes. Seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, he has it covered here.
So, that's-
Yes, yep. And we are working with Dr. Beaver. Sean went with me and Lacy. And, you know, he put a lot of money into those bricks. So, we're going to do our best to work with him. Him and Sean spoke and-
Yeah, he would like, he would like to stay with brick if possible. We discussed that there's only certain types that are ADA compliant. So, we'll work through those issues with him and-
He's very agreeable. He knows it may or may not happen. But we, we told, we do our best with what we budgeted to try to stay within that and make it happen for him.
Okay. So, originally, we were looking at sixty-one thousand in total engineering, and we're down to thirty thousand. And we had two hundred sixty-one thousand in ramps. And we're one hundred forty thousand, four sixty-four in actual cost to gram.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. That thirty thousand is just the estimated time period to construct these additional ramps times our main inspector's unit price for labors.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great. Then we've come the other, we've come the other way. Instead of going up, we backed up, which is good. And we still get-
Get a lot of work done.
-the ramps put in that we need. And with the contractor that is already here and with costs that are reasonable.
Yes, yes.
So, good. That's a win-win for everybody then.
And when you're using a unit cost, there's, it's pretty cut and dry to what the cost is. Areas yardage is consistent. So, yeah. Both contractor and owner benefit from that.
Yep.
Any other questions, gentlemen? We're good?
No more.
Okay. Okay. I move to authorize city staff to do a change order with gram construction for ADA curb ramps and curb repair for in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Item F. Consider an agreement with Montgomery County for ADA work.
Mayor, again, just from the city, our condolences. I had just visited with Scott Barnhart. I know Leonard had just visited with him. And our hearts go out to Charlotte Scott Smith, Amy and the family. So, I mean, just a very tragic deal. So, Scott had contacted me several weeks ago, probably three, wasn't it, Sean? They have reconstructed their parking lot, and they are, Jim, they're head of their street or county road. They're very busy. And Scott said, "Man, is there any way we can just work with you guys in what you're doing and just pass through?" I know Scott went, he called me Monday, must have been last week, that the county commissioners approved working with us. So, I shot him back what Sean had put together. And I know Leonard, I think you've talked to him. I don't know. He was okay last I talked to him with everything that we proposed. I don't know if there's any difference that you heard, Leonard, or-
No.
So, we're just asking for the agreement with the county. Jeff put together fairly simple, just to pass through.
Okay. I understand here the, the estimated cost of the ADA improvements would be nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy cents, and then two thousand dollars for inspection. And the Montgomery County, they've already approved, they would go ahead and reimburse the city for those costs.
Right.
Right. Okay. Well, that's, that's a good collaboration between the county and the city.
Sure is.
It saves them time and money.
Yep.
And so, that's, glad to see that.
And that is an area, Mayor, that we are moving next. Due to Neo Walla, we're going to be working over on that street. So, it's something that we'll be able to address fairly quickly, I think.
Yeah, they, they won't start anything near downtown in the next, until Neo Walla is complete. They're moving over to the Fifth Street area and this area, so.
Okay. All right, great. Gentlemen, any other questions?
Very exciting. I love it. We're good? All righty. I move to authorize the mayor
to sign the agreement with Montgomery County and for the city to request a change order for ADA work at Fifth and Myrtle for Montgomery County. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Item G. Consider a change order to the twenty eighteen ADA project in the eight hundred block of Tenth Street. Gentlemen.
Mayor, we're putting this out there. This is a proposal. The, and it's open for discussion with you, gentlemen. The east side of the road is what Leonard and me have talked about, it's a complex ramp. So, Halitz Liquor had contacted me, and I know Sean, and I know JJ went down and spoke to them. If you look on the corner there, we've kind of fixed the corner because the trucks have crushed it and all. And there's a, it's holding water all the time. While we're down there looking at this, we realize all of the kids, probably ninety percent of them utilize the west side of Tenth Street back and forth between the schools. So, we visited, Sean and I visited, JJ, and we got to looking at this. And we're proposing narrowing the entrance to Halitz to make it safer for the kids and just moving all of that to the other side. It does cost the city, I mean, it saves us twenty-two thousand by not working on the other side, but there is some cost by doing this work over here. But it does make our accessible path. So, that's kind of my pitch for switching this. I know Sean's here. But yes, we're doing a little more than just a ramp, but we thought these improvements would be necessary.
The railroad is immediately south of, or north of Railroad Street, as you know. So, we think it's a better, more likely approach to get block code or participate in one crossing than two. So, that's why we've basically chosen to, or recommending moving to one side of the road and concentrating on that. And this is the simpler side of the road. And it does, as David said, really fit the walking patterns better that the kids use. There's some, there's an existing large electric pole on this original, originally on the east side of the street with some guide wires, which original design, we were snaking through those. And it's expensive and honestly, not the best route for kids to be taking. It would, does make more sense to us in hindsight just to move to this side of the road. And like I said, you're really getting more bang for your buck. We're eliminating those two ramps, but you can see how much more we're doing with, with the same amount of money or, or with the seven thousand additional dollars. But we're basically doing all of that work.
We're cleaning up that intersection on that side of the street railroad because I think there's a lot of runoff and doesn't that material basically run back off into the intersection?
Yeah. She missed Halitz. I think she says it just sits there, right?
Yeah, she, the complaint, number one complaint was that there, she says there is sidewalk there, and she would like that connected. But then there's also a drainage issue. And then there is a massive entrance or driveway entrance across there, which really isn't needed and isn't exactly pedestrian safe, so.
And they're okay with changing that part of it?
We haven't discussed with them about narrowing the-
The drive.
-entrance. There is some things we could do to accommodate that better that we've discussed, like possibly combining the alley with this smaller entrance, where they still have a significantly wide entrance. And it really wouldn't impact pedestrians any if we just combined the alley with the, with the entrance.
She's really excited if we can help her with the corner. So, I think she's going to be very willing to work with us. And I, I think Sean and I's big concern right now, cars just swing in there to hit the liquor store, and those kids are walking- cars just swing in there to hit the liquor store and those kids are walking across, it's such a wide that we could get a kid hit, so that's our emphasis in narrowing that down for them.
And there's so much traffic along Tenth Street that that wide
Yeah.
entrance not only pedestrian, but vehicular traffic with a problem and it close to the intersection. Yeah, the, the proposal looks a lot better. The, the complex ramps are hard maintenance with debris and leaves, and if you can eliminate those, it makes life a lot easier for everyone.
Sounds like a good plan, gentlemen. Any other questions?
Well, it's sort of related to Tenth Street. Will the milling begin as soon as the ADA work is done on?
We truly anticipate they will call anytime, Leonard. Mike is just waiting for the call, probably within the next week or so, they should be milling.
And will the concrete work, will they be out of there?
May not be done and, and we.
Definitely won't be done here, probably.
We realize that some of that we'll have to accommodate
Yeah.
after the fact, but.
But they'll pull off and then come back?
No, I, I anticipate they'll just, they will do all of, all of Tenth Street mill and overlay. What we don't have done prior, we'll have to match the asphalt, which what we've done in the past, sometimes it, it's not as much problem as you think, but sometimes we do have to cut out in the asphalt slightly, another foot or two on a ramp to get it to match up and pour that with concrete. So we may be doing that, but we think we have, we know we still have a significant amount of quantity in there, we don't think it's gonna result in like a large additive change order or anything like that.
Well, since we added some ramps with, I was thinking more of the work conflict that, you know, the contractors kind of on a pattern, they're working concrete, they're gonna do this area, and now I've got to pull off to let you mill and overlay, but with the additional work we did, we're adding that they can relocate.
Yes, I think JJ said something about he could move them over on Fifth Street.
Yeah.
If we needed to.
We would prefer that we complete all the concrete on, on Tenth, but with the time of year, we just don't see that happening. We just have to deal with the two.
Depends on whether milling and overlay isn't quite as sensitive as concrete work excavation and.
Right.
But not anticipating any change order because of the conflict of the two projects, is there?
No, we, we don't want to get change order.
All right, if there's no further questions, then I move to authorize the change order with grand construction to change the ADA curb ramps and sidewalk improvements as proposed in the drawing for, for an overall cost of seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item H, consider changing the location at the September twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen special commission meeting scheduled for ten-thirty AM to nineteen-sixteen City Hall for a tour, then reconvene into Memorial Hall.
Mayor and Commissioners, I thought this might be a nice opportunity to review this area as a group with the trainer architects that will be here. And it might be good to have that visual before we sit down and work on programming some more. So we thought that might be helpful, and so we are suggesting that that they change the location of the meeting and then, then reconvene to Memorial Hall after that. And once you get done with this one, then we can discuss the, the other one next week that we need to modify on the water plant.
On the water plant, okay. This particular one, we were actually meeting at nine o'clock on the twenty-fifth, is that right?
Yeah, we are, we're meeting, that one's already set, that's on the nine-one-one thing, and then we have a ten-thirty meeting set for the programming. But instead of starting at here, at ten-thirty, we'll start at Memorial Hall at ten, or not Memorial Hall, City Hall, at ten-thirty, then come back here at approximately around eleven-thirty.
Okay.
If you're, take probably about an hour to go through the building and then get back over here.
Okay, that'll be a public meeting.
Yeah, anybody can go.
There's no issue if we have a crowd, I can't imagine we would, but.
No, the elevator is not functioning, so there, you know, there are stairs, so.
It is a construction site.
It is, so, you know, so just.
No requirements or hard hats or anything like that?
Hats or vests or anything like that?
There isn't any overhead hazards when I was in there, so.
A hard head is recommended.
The ceilings are tall, so unless you're extremely tall, you should be okay, so.
Yeah, that counts me out then. Okay.
I didn't mean it that way there, I'm just saying.
It's okay, I'm laughing, I'm laughing. Can't laugh out yourself, well, anyway.
You'd have to be like twelve feet tall, so.
Oh, okay, well, all right, all right then. I move to change, I make a motion that we move to change the location of September twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen special commission meeting scheduled for ten-thirty AM to nineteen-sixteen City Hall for a tour, then reconvene at approximately eleven-thirty AM in the veterans' room at Memorial Hall, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And then the next one, and I'm sorry, I was gonna get this to you earlier, but I've been tied up this afternoon. On the eighteenth, we had the tour of the water plant at nine o'clock, already pre-scheduled. I am requesting that we reconvene at ten o'clock to this room to discuss phase two of that project, so we can get started on that. And then also, we have some airport grants that we had applied for previously that we need to reapply for, so I'm gonna bring those to you as well.
Okay, let me write this down here. Okay, so nine AM, we will meet at the water plant on the eighteenth.
Yes, as previously scheduled on that one.
On that one, and then we will reconvene here at ten in the morning.
Yes.
In the veterans' room here, and we have some.
Discuss phase two with the engineers and the.
Airport?
Yes, and then Terry will be involved in, you know, the conversation on the phase two as well. And then we'll visit about resubmitting some airport grants.
Okay. All right, so the motion will be, basically, we have a meeting set for September the eighteenth, we will meet at the water plant for a tour of the facilities at nine AM. We will reconvene here in the veterans' room at ten AM to discuss phase two of the water facility. And then we will also bring into consideration reapplying for airport grants.
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, so with that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, item I, consider signing an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty-nineteen, for the City of Independence, Kansas, and a resolution prescribing the form and details of the bond.
And I believe when they brought this to you before, we weren't sure exactly when they were gonna do this because they were gonna try to do it when the market was most favorable. And so when we sent the packets out Monday, we didn't realize it was gonna be, they were gonna have it done for this one, so that's why I had to send out an amended packet to get approval of this, so I think you guys had a heads up in that previous presentation that that probably would occur, and by the way the meetings fell, we didn't have to have another special meeting, because I know how much you guys love having all those special meetings.
Yes, we do.
And so we were able to add it to this agenda. And the saving is, is what, two thousand dollars more than we originally thought it was gonna be, so, you know, we're happy with that.
Yeah, it says here after savings after refinancing fees are forty thousand and seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. So that's, that's a significant amount of savings, so it's, it's a good deal, good deal for the city, good deal for the community. Great.
Yeah, I love that chart in there too, showing the interest rates, and we're right at the absolute bottom.
Yeah, it's really fantastic. Yes.
That's what I was looking, do you remember what the interest rate was? Was it three?
I was gonna say one point nine seven or something ridiculous like that.
It doesn't say on there, does it? No.
It says that two thousand and seven general bonds were at four point three seven five percent. And the two thousand and twelve A bonds were at between two point two five and two point seven five percent. And those are the ones that we are refunding, refinancing
Okay.
in this twenty-nineteen series.
That's what the interests they were at now?
Yes.
And it was down to?
Two point nine seven.
Okay. All right. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, I, I see there's two motions that I need to make that are highlighted here. So let me read motion, first motion. I move to approve an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty-nineteen, of the City of Independence, Kansas, for the purpose of providing funds to refund the city outstanding general obligation bonds, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax, for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and action in connection therewith and making certain covenants with respect thereto. Do I have a second?
Wherewith, yes.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Second motion, I move to adopt a resolution prescribing the form and detail of an author, authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty, twenty-nineteen, of the City of Independence, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number forty-twenty-eight of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Do I have a second?
I didn't understand a word of it, but I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four, discussion. And this is discussion regarding the proposed central, southwest and southeast neighborhood revitalization districts. Kelly.
Mayor and Commissioners, I believe I emailed this out to you, I don't know, maybe a few weeks ago, so you could start taking a look at it. I apologize, it's taken a while, it was a little bit tedious, but I think we're moving forward. This is the, shows the the districts that were expired and then also our current districts. And then this has the ones that are expired replaced by the proposed districts with the new boundaries. And what I did is I took the condition map that we got from the county, Anne at the county has been wonderful and she's provided us with so much data, it's been very useful in a lot of our efforts on dealing with condemned houses, but it's very helpful in revitalization. Because part of the statute in, in when you determine a revitalization zone, it's supposed to be, meet the definition of having blight. And what better definition can we have and, and show proof of that than to have this condition report? So all the things with words on it are either poor or unsound properties as identified by the county appraiser's office. And as you can see, I tried to capture in the proposed districts those neighborhoods that, you know, has, you know, an opportunity to do some rehabilitation that we can aid with that. So this is the current expired and central proposed, they're kind of overlaid. The boundaries did change because as we spoke about yesterday, we wanted to exclude all properties that were in the floodplain. And so what I did is I looked at each individual parcel. If the majority of the parcel was not in the floodplain and could be developed, I went ahead and included it. If the majority was not, or if there were already structures that were already in the floodplain, then I did not include it. And that's how I, my methodology and how I did this. So that's the central expired district, this is the central proposed. As you can see, I captured a neighborhood up a little bit further north, there were a few houses there that have been identified and changed the districts on the west to avoid that floodplain. Here's the overlay of the southeast area of the proposed and the expired. And you can see how the boundaries have changed there. There's the expired district and there is the proposed district. So, and I did try to beat up, if sometimes we had areas that maybe one house wasn't in either district, and I tried to correct those and, and match them up as best I could.
Did you say I tried to beat up?
No, I tried, I tried to beat them up with an M, meet them up.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, it's been a really long day. So, it's hard telling what I'll say. But anyway, so this one shows the condition report underneath them that shows that that justifies those areas. Here's your southwest district with both the expired and the proposed overlaid. Here is the expired district, here is the proposed district. And as you can see, tried to avoid the flood zones and tried to, you know, meet it up with the other districts. So, and then there's the condition report on that one.
Wow.
That shows all of the poor and unsound. When you zoom into them, you can see them a little bit, you know, better, kind of where they're at. But you can see that those are some areas that we have some challenges on, and I went way ahead, sorry about that. But anyway, so I just, before I start pulling all of the parcel data and working with the county on the resolution language, because as you remember, on the North Penn district, we went through the whole process, got to the county, which was the last part of the interlocal to get their signature, and they didn't like the language, and then we had to start all over, and it took like another year to get it approved, so I don't wanna go through that again. So, I'll go with the, I'll check with the county first and work with them. And I've already talked to Rusty at the school district to telling the methodology I'm using on the condition report, and he seems great with that. So, I just need to get your feedback if you have any issues with the boundaries, how I have drawn them, if you want me to modify them. Because once you're okay with these, then I'll start getting to work on pulling all that parcel data and putting all that documentation together so that we can get these adopted.
The boundaries look, look good. I think if, the wording, it seemed like, wasn't it dealing with, they wanted a three-year average of the tax? Because this is only dealing with the tax increase, the base tax will still be there, but it's the, that increased portion, and I think, wasn't it that they wanted an average of three years?
Yeah, there's something like that, and what I'll probably do, they just passed one for out in the county, because everything in the county that's not in an incorporated city is in a neighborhood revitalization district now, that the county adopted. So since they just did one recently, I, I'll get with Charlotte and get that language and compare it to what we had on the North Penn one and see when I need to adjust, and then try to get that worked out on the language.
Yeah, Kelly, I think they were trying to avoid somebody buying property, raising it, then to get appraised at vacant lot.
January one being vacant.
And then come in and build.
Yes.
And.
When it previously had a value, yeah, I, I believe you're correct.
So I, I think if we follow that format and like you're talking before you do the work, that would.
Yeah, I, I learned a valuable lesson last time, so I'm not gonna do it that way this time.
I see the building permit now has a, a question about neighborhood revitalization. plans, so it's easy to identify at application.
And then I had a, I had a question too, I actually talked to Lisa Richard about this, 'cause she was interested in it, and I went through the, the, my, uh, maths with her to see if she had some input for me, and she did bring up a good point, well, what if they, 'cause it, to qualify, it has to be a 5 percent increase. Well, what if they do something that doesn't require a building permit, like put a new roof on, but it increases the value of the property 5 percent? And so, I had sent in a message into Charlotte to ask her that, that was before all this other stuff had happened, so.
Right.
I'll just, uh, wait a while until we get a response back, but I thought that was a good question, 'cause I thought, well, that, how would we trigger that for somebody that's maybe doing a roof, and maybe it would be, increase the value 5 percent?
Yeah, 'cause it, I think appraisal, at one time, they said, if it's general maintenance, it doesn't increase the value, but it depends on the condition of the house, that if the roof is severely deteriorated, and you come in, you can, just by putting a roof with...
If you put a roof on and painted, which neither of one, you would need a permit for, maybe that would be enough to, to increase the value 5 percent, where it would be worth it to somebody, so I need to find out that question.
New siding, new windows, new, yeah, new HVAC.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, um, so we're gonna check into that to see if, if they want, somebody wants to apply for it, but they didn't go through the building permit process to make sure we're capturing those.
That's a good idea.
I thought that was a good, good thought, so.
Definitely encourage, uh, investment in existing properties.
And I believe it's, uh, fif- or 100 percent the first five years, 50 percent the next five years on new construction or rehabilitation, unless it's a historic structure, then it's 100 percent for the, uh, 10 years, but I believe it has to be on the National Register.
Yeah.
Somebody asked me today if, um, we get a lot of takers on this, is it really acting as an incentive, and I had to, I was embarrassed to say, I really don't know, do we get?
Well, I know some of the bigger projects, I know have taken advantage of it, if they're in a zone, we tell them about it, and, you know, they're, they're applying for it, I mean, they'd be silly not to.
Right, I just had never heard any numbers at all.
You're just leaving money on the table, I mean, they pay the taxes, and then they rebate it back to them, but, but I think all of our big projects, they have applied for this.
But is this acting as an incentive, or they were just, they're gonna do the project anyway, and?
I can't say that's the only reason, I know that the one where they're doing the DCF office, said that that was one of the determining factors that made him decide to do it in this city versus another city, because we had that program. Now, there could have been other factors as well, but he did mention that was one of the factors.
Good to know.
So, I, I mean, I think it does help.
Thank you.
I mean, everything helps.
Sure.
But it's primarily just big projects, is?
Anything that increases the value, I believe it's 5 percent over, they are eligible to apply, there might be a minimum dollar amount too, I, I, we were looking through it with Lisa the other day, we were looking through it, and I didn't see that, but it looked like it was a 5 percent increase in the assessed value.
So, in these areas that are mapped out here?
Uh-huh.
These residential areas, are, are we seeing activity from this?
Well, the, the ones we have before are expired.
Okay.
So, they're not eligible, so I'm trying to get those, um, updated.
But the ones that are currently, uh, in force, are we seeing activities in those zones?
You mean in the, the residential neighborhoods? I don't know if David can answer that, do you know?
Are we seeing any activity on that end, or?
Very many housing projects.
No. Okay.
And it could be too, that maybe we're not doing a good enough job letting people know we have this program, so, maybe we do, we need to do some more marketing, and make sure people are aware that we have it.
Okay. Just looking at the map and looking at the conditions of the housing structures on, as you went through the, the different sections of town.
The big factor is you gotta have the money to put it in.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's, it's there, uh, as an, as a tool for somebody in the area, and of course, commercial will benefit, uh, the greatest.
Yeah, but you do hear a lot of people say, I would fix up my house, but then think what'll happen to my property taxes, so it's nice to have a tool to say.
Gets rid of that argument if it's a significant project.
Absolutely. I think it's very important.
Gentlemen, any, any, anything else on that?
Sounds good to me.
All right, Kelly, thanks.
You guys are all okay with the bound?
I think so, it looks good.
Yeah.
I think it really...
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Makes a lot more sense now to include those additional areas.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, uh, reports. Item A, we have an update on 223 West Main Street. David?
Mr. Mayor, if this is a discussion, I'd like to leave the front table.
I don't know, it's gonna be, I think, I'm just gonna give you a brief update.
You're just giving us an, an update, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm too lazy to stand up then.
Huh?
I'm too lazy to stand up then.
I don't blame you, sir. Uh, Mayor, I, I'm happy to report that we issued yesterday a temporary occupancy license to, uh, Mr. Morrison for the brewery, uh, it does have some conditions on it, uh, kind of a little punch list that they need to do, uh, Mr. Box, uh, they were, they're happy, uh, I spoke to Mr. Morrison this evening, uh, he wanted me to relay to the commission that he appreciated the, uh, us doing that, uh, he is, we did release the stop-work order on the basement and the first floor to allow the workers to get back to work and to do this work. We still have a s- stop-work order on the second and third floor, uh, Mr. Morrison is in agreement with that, he did indicate he has the new MEP, he does not have the other plans done yet, he anticipates those in maybe two weeks, but he would like to focus on, let's get the brewery open for the community.
Yeah.
And get that going, uh, we will then, he would then like to submit all of the plans together at one time, and then we can work to get the rest of the project going, so I'm happy to report that.
Good, that's good news to hear. He's not having any other issues as far as what he needs to do concerning, um, meeting the issuance of his temporary occupancy license?
He didn't indicate, uh, he called me yesterday after I sent that license, and complimented us on the, the letter and everything that we had in there, and that they would proceed as quickly as possible, and every effort to get the brewery open, and like he said, today, that is his focus, to get this brewery open, and he's gonna do every effort to do that.
Right.
I know details, I know Jessica, I think it's Jessica and Robert have an event mid-October, uh, so, I mean, we're looking by the first of October to sign off on the punch list and...
Good.
Have them ready to go, so.
All right, that's great news. Thank you, David.
You bet.
All right, um, moving right along, um, oh, sorry, oh, I'd forgotten. All right, uh, we, we do have, um, a citizen that would like to address 223 West Main, Debbie Miller, would you please come up and? And?
How long do I have?
Yeah, go ahead.
As much time as I want. Just hoping. I have witnessed many things at City Hall, but few have been the unbelievable spectacle as the one involving 223 West Main. City Manager Whitehead could have recognized that the inspection of this unique project may have been beyond staff, staff skillset, and requested that a more experienced individual be contracted to assist them. Since he failed to do so, city staff made mistakes. Additionally, Morrison Builders allowed plans designed by its own architect and approved by the city to be altered without the city's permission. This resulted in code violations, a stop-work order, and delays. Incredibly, Commissioners Kaflish and Yasusi have been relentlessly attacked because other people did not do what they should have done. Furthermore, for some inexplicable reasons, they have endured tremendous criticism for endorsing, enforcing codes meant to reduce the risk of citizens being injured or killed in the event of a fire. What do those individuals who've publicly humiliated and maligned Commissioners Kaflish and Yasusi want them to do? Allow a building with known and potentially dangerous code violations to be opened for use? Allow all other builders to violate codes? Why don't these critics seem to care about citizen safety, especially when those citizens live on second and third-story apartments? Then there's all the hypocrisy associated with this fiasco. How many times has it been noted that Commissioners should stay in their lanes, or that Commissioner Kaflish is a micromanager, or that it's unusual for Commissioners to get involved in matters staff should handle? And yet, it's been Commissioners Kaflish and Yasusi that have been expected to provide the leadership to responsibly clean up the mess made by others. Furthermore, it's been Mr. Kaflish's expertise upon which many have relied to navigate them through the intricacies of this very uncommon and complicated project. Morrison Builders, not Commissioners Kaflish and Yasusi, is responsible for holding up the completion of this building. Therefore, it serves absolutely no purpose for this commission to hold more meetings so individuals can try to sidestep building codes, make false accusations, launch irrelevant personal attacks, and otherwise demean to men that have been honorably and steadfastly committed to ensuring the safety of all. Lastly, those individuals that have seemingly been quite willing, for whatever reason, to jeopardize the public's welfare, unjustifiably berate Commissioners Kaflish and Yasusi, and throw them under the bus for self-serving purposes, should apologize to them, and to all others that have been ill-served by their misleading comments, reprehensible rants, and seeming indifference to the well-being of over 8,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, um, moving right along, uh, Commissioners, do you have any comments, anything you'd like to bring forward?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Um, I do. The last meeting, if you're watching, it was probably entertaining, to say the least, but I'm the one that's responsible for the direction of the meeting, so if there's criticism that's coming, then I'm the one. I'm the one that had control of the meeting. I've tried to be more than generous with time. I remember sitting in the audience and having to bite my tongue many a time, because I wanted to stand up in the middle of something and say something, and I knew I couldn't, and I knew that my time would be at the end of the meeting, and it would be for three minutes, so I've tried to be very liberal, trying to give people the opportunity to speak, because the complaints I hear when I was sitting out there from other people, well, it's a public meeting. Well, I understand that, that there's nobody, none of us three gentlemen get paid for what we're doing here. Uh, you know, we're trying to do the job at the best we can with the information that we get, presented for us to the best of our ability. So, as much as I would not want to go back to doing this, we're gonna go back to three minute, if you're gonna address the commission, please look at the Commissioners rather than facing the audience and trying to drum up support, and, and please stick to the topic that's at, at hand, and, uh, hopefully, we're treating you respectfully in the audience, but we also respect that back. If you have something that's really irritating you, and it's gonna take three, more than three minutes, we all have email addresses, we all have phone numbers, I would be happy to meet with anyone in person, on the telephone, through email, anytime, any place, and I've always made that available, so if you've got a gripe or complaint with me, bring it on. Comes with the territory, and I don't have a problem with that, so, so we're gonna go back to that. Got a little out of hand, I'm the one that's responsible for it, so I'm gonna take, take the responsibility, so, hopefully, we will, uh, avoid any of those particular type meetings in the future, so, we just ask that, we, we show you respect, and we ask that back, and, and it's okay if we disagree to disagree, hey, it's free country. You know, we're not, we're all not gonna think the same way and, and believe the same things, but we should be able to talk to each other respectfully, and not at each other, and, and that's what I'm asking, so. With that, I'm gonna leave the comments, I'm done making the comments. Uh, we don't have any other public concerns, my favorite part of the meeting is adjournment, I make a motion that we adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're outta here. Thank you for attending tonight.